Good evening, everybody. I will call this Richfield City Council Meeting of November 12th, 2019 to order. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session of October 22nd, 2019, and the regular City Council Meeting of October 22nd, 2019.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the Consent Calendar, and I will pass that over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The Consent Calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the Consent Calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A: Consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a small wireless facility in the right-of-way near 6920 Penn Avenue South. Item B: Consider the adoption of a resolution to accept a grant of $3,114 from the Office of Justice Programs for Bulletproof Best. Item C: Consider approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 10th, 2019 to consider issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license for Los Sanchez Taqueria. Item D: Consider approval of an animal shelter agreement with the City of Bloomington. Item E: Consider approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 10th, 2019 for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for 2020 for El Tejeban Mexican Grill, Fireside Foundry, Frenchman's, Giordano's, Hula Hands Restaurant and Bar, Khan's Mongolian Barbecue, Lynn 65 Kitchen and Bar, Lindale Smokehouse Pizza Luce, and the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post 435. Item F: Consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 10th, 2019 for the consideration of the renewal of pawnbroker and second goods dealer licenses for 2020 from Metro Pawn and Gun, Inc. Item G: Consider approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 10th, 2019 for the consideration of the renewal on-sale wine and on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license for 2020 for Chipotle Mexican Grill, Devani's Pizza and Hot Hoagies, Joy's Pataya Thai Restaurant, Local Roots Food and Coffee, Minnesota Magicians, My Burger, Patrick's Bakery and Cafe, and Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant. Item H: Consider approval of request for a new therapeutic massage enterprise. I love massages. Item I: Consider approval of setting public hearing to be held on December 10th to consider issuance of a new on-sale wine and 3.2 malt liquor license for Sandy's Tavern. Item J: Consider the adoption of a resolution approving the undertaking of the Phase 1 environmental site assessment at 7636 Cedar Avenue South as part of the forthcoming 77th Street Underpass Project. I submit that all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple?
I'll move. The consent calendar is written.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar from council members? Alright. Oh, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna mention something. I know we had the small towers that are, we had the, the issue came up for Penn Avenue, and I talked to a citizen this morning who's been here before and voiced concerns about those towers, and I've heard it from other citizens, and they'd mentioned they were gonna be here. I expected to see them tonight, and so just for folks that have those concerns in the community, we expressed our consternation about the state policy during the city planning phase, and just to reiterate for folks, you know, this is something that we have to comply with state law about. But I just wanted to raise those concerns even though that citizen isn't here, just that there is that, there are those community concerns.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, I'm just moving the, I jumped back to the consent agenda here. This is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving a final plat for the Novo addition in order to allow the construction of the previously approved Novo apartments at 66th Street and Queen Avenue. The development plans for Novo apartments at 66th Street and Queen Avenue were approved by the City Council on December 11th, 2018. Replanting of the property was a stipulation of that approval. The development site for Novo consists of eight parcels of land and adjacent right-of-way. The developer has either purchased all eight of these properties or has them under binding purchase agreements. The proposed final plat will combine those properties into a single lot. The proposed plat of Novo has been reviewed by the City Attorney's Office, Richfield Public Works, and Hennepin County. All comments have been addressed or included as stipulations in the resolution. While the public hearing is required by state statute, the plat is a technical document dealing with the combination or division of land, and it's not a reconsideration of land use approvals for the development. The proposed plat meets the requirements, and therefore staff recommends approval of the attached resolution. So this is a, this is a public hearing, so if we have anybody that'd like to speak, you're welcome to speak.
In one second, is City Manager Rodriguez or City Attorney Techen, could you just remind us, is the speaking time three minutes that we ask people for this public hearing? Excellent. Thank you. Welcome. I know you've been here before, so please sign your name, and if you could please keep your remarks to three minutes.
2421 West 65th Street. I have a few questions. Did the City of Richfield insist that property owners on South 65th and a half Street hand over their property titles to Broadway Investors? These former owners told me they had no option but to sell to Broadway. Are Richfield councilpersons and commissioners contemptuous of public hearings, of open meeting laws, of conventional rules of order, and of the United States Constitution? On June 11th, before the commission, I outlined laws and conventions. Richfield staff and council have transgressed in order to favor Broadway's plan to destroy not only our roads and homes, but also our health and welfare. Did you find my comments to be inaccurate or accurate? On 11/3/18, Broadway staff and city councilperson stood side by side at Oak Terrace on 66th Street to present a united front to the elders of the neighborhood. The phrase "done deal" was used liberally prior to any scheduling of a public hearing on Broadway's plan to destroy our neighborhood. Our public hearings deliberately scheduled in such a way as to make public participation inconvenient and uncomfortable. On 12/11/18, council scheduled its singular hearing on Broadway's proposal. It was one of more than 20 hearings and one of 38 items on the agenda that night. Hearings on meat and potato items such as budget items and neighborhood destruction were not opened until after 9:00 PM, following two hours of councilperson's self-congratulatory ceremonies. Our Richfield staffers prevented from accepting documentation from the public for placement on council agendas. I attempted to place a single-page document placed before council for its 6/11/19 meeting. I asked my councilperson to provide me with the procedure well in advance of that meeting. That person was evasive and unhelpful. I submitted the document to staff. It did not appear in council's packet. When I asked why not, the staff replied that he was not told to put that amongst the documents. Broadway Investors, however, had in excess of 20 pages placed before the council on that date. What is the difference between Broadway Investors and Trident slash Broadway Investor? Prior to 2019, no mention of Trident appeared in council and commission papers, even though at the 10/22/19 hearing, to extend the terms of the council's 12/11/18 resolution for Broadway was placed upon the consent consent agenda. Council's placement of a public hearing upon a consent agenda has got to be questioned. Consent agenda items by definition do not receive a hearing. They are passed without further discussion. On 12/26/19, when testimony is conflicted, why did commissioners save Broadway over its citizenry? Longtime resident Mr. Khan testified that he did not wish to move, and he would proceed with ongoing efforts to improve his home and grounds. At the same meeting, Broadway told commissioners it had purchased Mr. Khan's home and ground. Why did council choose to ignore my letter of 12/3/18? In it, I spoke of personal harm I have endured. I spoke of how the destruction of my neighborhood will harm my health and my well-being and will shorten my life. I pleaded for representation, for consideration, and for empathy. I asked you to obstruct Broadway and to protect me. Have you read your mission statement? That is your mission. Why did commissioners accept curt and inaccurate answers to their important questions? At the same planning commission meeting, Broadway told commissioners that it was in communication with Frazier, and that Frazier did not oppose Broadway's plan to build a road in their residents' backyard. As late as June 2019, there was testimony to the fact that residents were unaware of Broadway's plan to attack their already compromised auditory and nervous system. Who is looking out for these residents' well-being? They have already been subjected to the rebuilding of 66th Street up against the residents in the front yard. Now we are allowing them to be further harassed. As we sit here today, can you assure me that the families and guardians of these neighbors have been informed of Broadway's plans to do further and greater harm to these residents? Is council unaware that for months and months persistent noise and serious traffic hazards will occur just a stone's throw from Sheridan Elementary School? Heavy and constantly beeping destruction and transport vehicles will utilize West 65th Street and Russell Avenue intersection as a main thoroughfare? Have teachers, students, and kids themselves been advised? How do you mitigate blasting noises at students' efforts to concentrate? Why do you jeopardize their safety by placing huge vehicles on the pathways to their school? Why does council choose to ignore its own policy developed in 2015 regarding the establishment of multifamily dwellings in the city? When did a single occupant or his or her pet become a family? Your policy establishes these units to be placed away from single-family homes. Broadway plans to eliminate these residences and to harm its neighbors. Your policy limits the number of stories before. Broadway pushes the envelope to five. Your policy calls for blending of units to accommodate singles as well as larger families. Broadway offers $1,600 per month efficiency units, an unaffordable sum for many of today's market, and especially out of range for persons of color. A Broadway staffer once told one of my neighbors whose property had been placed on Broadway's chopping block that the high prices were established so as to keep out section aiders and other such riffraff. I suggest it is now time for councilperson to review its policies with respect to providing citizenry of every ethnicity, affordable housing in Richfield. How does council mitigate for the lung damage Broadway's residents will experience as oxygen becomes depleted? Your policy calls for green space and the establishment of community gardens. Broadway will disembowel the land of its many mature standing oaks. Sorry, folks, no community gardens. Broadway instead places its tenants over fumes of carbon dioxide generated by cars, trucks, and buses. Is council aware of the fact that when Broadway moved into our neighborhood, so did vagrants? After chasing out responsible neighbors, Broadway did not lock the doors and windows of their properties, nor did Broadway keep lawns and gardens tended. It became the job of neighboring elders to police them. Richfield streets may or may not be sweet, but they do not belong in the backyard of the mentally and physically handicapped residing next door to Frazier's group home. Destroying solid, single-family structures in favor of some investors' get-rich-quick scheme is especially cruel. When you factor in the effects such action will have upon my most vulnerable neighbors, the very elderly, the handicapped, and schoolchildren. Council should amend the regular meeting minutes, oh, excuse me. This is, council should amend your regular meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2019. It was I who spoke at the tail end of a very long, open forum on the subject of the consent agenda, not Mary Smith as recorded. With your kind permission, I would like to give each of you a copy, a written copy of the remarks I have made to you this evening. Is that agreeable to you?
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, if there are, are there any other, any other comments? This is a public hearing. Any other comments? Any comments? Be no comments, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any questions on the public hearing? Oh, Councilmember Supple?
I just had a procedural question. The speaker mentioned that the name was incorrect in the minutes. Is that something we can correct this evening? To make sure that, do we need a formal motion to correct that name?
Councilmember Supple, I would recommend that we go back and have staff check the minutes, and then we can make that correction.
So at the next meeting, we can fix that to make sure it's accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on that public hearing? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed. And before we move to the adoption of the resolution, I don't know if we can get clarification or anything from staff?
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor. And do we do the, after we, is there a motion and then we have discussion? So do we move the item, then discuss, or maybe we discuss the matter now? Okay.
Yep, if we can go to staff first, that would be good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. You know, the item tonight that's before you is a replat of a piece of property, so it has to do with the property lines, where properties are gonna be combined, where roads are gonna be dedicated. This body, the City Council, did approve a preliminary plat on June 11th of this year. In the intervening time, that preliminary plat was reviewed by the City Attorney's Office, our Public Works staff, and Hennepin County. It was also made available for review by all the public utilities. So the purpose of the time between the preliminary plat and the final plat is to make sure that there aren't issues that are of practical concern or legal concern with what was adopted in the preliminary plat, and we did not see any such issues. In terms of the testimony in the public hearing, I'll limit my comments to things that are related to the replating of property. The, as I said, a part of this is combining properties that, into another one. The property owners, the previous property owners have all sold their properties now, I believe. There was no authorization for the use of condemnation or eminent domain in this project, and so all of those property owners would have had to have been willing sellers. The city or no public agency would have had any ability to put any pressure to do anything otherwise. And then, there was a question asked, what is the difference between Broadway and Trident? Broadway Investors is the developer that brought this forward for its land use approvals. Since that time, Trident has signed on as an investor in the property as well. But I should note that in neither the resolution nor the plat itself is any mention of either Broadway or Trident. So it's really what's showing up in the public record as property boundaries. So with that, I would answer any other questions you might have.
Questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. I know a number of the concerns that were raised. It's not the first opportunity we've had, and staff's had to address some of those, even if they're not, haven't been addressed to the satisfaction of our citizen. But I did have a question. Something that was new to me was the unsightly nature of the property and unsecured buildings. That's something I'd not heard of previously, and I know now the need to mow lawns maybe has been, has been abdicated, or has been cut short because of the weather. But if the buildings are unsecure, is that something public safety could maybe take a look at, or maybe they have?
Yes, councilmembers. I had not heard that either, that there was a concern about the condition of the vacant properties. Haven't heard that tonight. I will ask that the property is being investigated tomorrow. Have a community service officer or somebody do a drive-by to make sure that everything looks proper. Again, if there's any specific address or specific concern, if you'd let, if anybody in the public would let city employees know, then that specific address or that specific concern can be addressed very quickly.
No, thank you for that, and even though I, as a councilmember, as an elected person, I don't like disappointing anybody, and I know this decision we made last year, you know, disappoints you, but to the extent that there are things like this that come up that we can't address, I'm still committed to looking for smaller, big ways that we can address, concerns that we can address. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Other questions or comments from councilmembers? I just wanted to echo Councilmember Troutman's last comment, so, you know, I have to go through the four-page document that we just received tonight and see if there are other things in the process moving forward that are mentioned in here that are things that we can be proactive on or work on. And I know staff has a copy of this, so if we could do that and just look through here to see if there's anything that can be addressed. And then, there was a question around the understanding of the consent calendar and how it's used. So could you just explain kind of the items that go on consent calendar, and that things that need public hearings must have their public hearings, and how that works in relation to the consent calendar, please, City Manager?
Sure, Mayor. So the items that are put on consent calendar are more the less controversial, day-to-day, managing-the-city items. And tonight, the action that we took on the public hearings, it was just setting the date of the public hearing. It is not the actual public hearing. Okay. For the liquor licenses.
Councilmember Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I think there was some confusion in that the language of, from, I believe it was our last session, can be confusing, that when we essentially postpone a public hearing, that's phrased as we will continue a public hearing. So just to clarify that that, I guess maybe someone with more knowledge of the wording and the terminology could speak more to that, but that just simply means that it is getting pushed to the following meeting.
And if an item, if an item is on the consent calendar that isn't the day-to-day type of items that City Manager Rodriguez is talking about, it is notifying the public that that will be coming up in the next council meeting as well. Any other questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Supple?
I know this has come up at the HRE in the past, but it's my understanding that anytime we have like a development agreement or anything, we do encourage that they work with the neighbors, whether it's Frazier, or the individual neighbors, or the school district. And so I would hope that that would be a policy that continues, that we work together to try and make sure that it works well for everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Alright, I think there's no other comments.
Then I would move we adopt a resolution approving a final plat of the Novo addition.
Is there a second?
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is consideration of approval of the updated five-year street reconstruction plan for 2020 to 2024, as detailed at the October 22nd, 2019 City Council Work Session, and a resolution for reimbursement of certain expenditures from the proceeds of street reconstruction bonds to be issued by the City of Richfield for the Lindale Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. The city is authorized under Minnesota statutes to prepare a five-year plan for street reconstruction in order to issue general obligation bonds to finance the cost of the reconstruction described in the plan. The plan was last updated on July of 2018 for the years of 2019 to 2023, and the proposed plan updates the five-year plan through 2024. The reconstruction of Lindale Avenue from 66th to 76th Street has been underway since May of this year. The project will achieve substantial completion by the end of 2019. Approval of the proposed resolution will enable city staff to continue incurring construction costs for the project. The resolution also, or excuse me, allows costs incurred up to 60 days prior to council approval of the resolution to be reimbursed through the proceeds of the street reconstruction bonds. The original budget and funding identified a total of $12.5 million in street reconstruction bonds to be issued in 2019 and 2020 for both the 66th Street and Lindale Avenue projects. In 2019, $5.53 million in street construction bonds were sold, and the proposed resolution identifies an additional $3 million in 2020 to complete the funding for the Lindale Avenue reconstruction. This is consistent with the attached five-year plan and was discussed at the October 22nd, 2019 City Council Work Session. And I know there are a number of questions, and it was thoroughly vetted at that point. Did you want to add anything from the staff?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Supple, I would just like to add that Lindale did get paved, so the final pavement and the final lift is on for the winter, which we're a little bit worried about. You know, it's not related to what you're looking at tonight, but it should be open before the weekend.
Wonderful.
Excellent. Other comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Whelan?
Just a quick clarification. I, realizing this, it came up when I read this the first time, and should I have asked you ahead of time? But the, that $5.53 million, is that, the actual amount we bonded was more, but is the rest of that, that was like the utility bonds and such?
Correct, Councilmember Whelan.
Other? Yeah, you can do, is there a motion?
Alright, so I would move that we approve the updated five-year street reconstruction plan for 2020 to 2024, as detailed at the October 22nd, 2019 City Council Work Session, and further move that we approve the resolution for reimbursement of certain expenditures from the proceeds of street reconstruction bonds to be issued in 2020 by the City of Richfield for the Lindale Avenue Street Reconstruction Project.
Is there a second? Are there any other council comments or questions on this item? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question and a clarification. As we look to this, this isn't, this isn't a commitment to do all these things. All these, these projects still have further conversations that need to be had, will have, as we look to this. We'll have, as, as we look to raise funds for them, as we get closer to them, this is, this is a plan, not a, not a firm commitment to do it. Just so, so folks at home, as they're looking at this and they say, well, I have a bunch of questions. We do too. This is just a, a commitment to a direction because we need that plan, but it's not, um, it's not the end of conversations. It's just orienting your, your good work in the city. Is that correct?
Correct, Councilmember Troutman. What this is, is the approval of the plan is, is a plan. It's just that when we have a firm commitment to anything, there's a public hearing.
Yep.
And then we also would adopt a resolution. There's a thirty-day reverse referendum period that goes along with any, all of that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Troutman and Director Asher. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Whalen.
Um, just quickly for anyone watching, I realized we did not introduce Director Asher. So, um, that's who's been speaking from the, the staff's perspective. Um, but I, I just want to encourage, uh, anyone who, a question that I get often as a council member is, um, about kind of, that it sometimes seems like we're making really big decisions and there's not a lot of discussion. I'd really encourage anyone who's curious to learn more about this to go listen to the, the audio recording of this work session from October twenty-second. Um, we have been now for about six months posting the work sessions as well, and that's where a lot of the, um, discussion happens, questions get answered, details get worked out. Um, so if you have, uh, ongoing questions about that, we just recommend, um, taking, uh, taking a listen to that.
Councilmember Supple.
And to follow up on that, there was a long discussion at that work session about, like, long-term planning and looking at debt load and making sure we spread out our maintenance and infrastructure needs so that we're considering, you know, the taxpayers and, so we can kind of do a long-term plan instead of just being reactive. So it was kind of a proactive way to look at it. And I second that, I think it'd be good for people to listen to the work sessions.
Thank you. Other final comments or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion has been approved, and I see that there's another one. Oh, we did both of them together. Okay, sorry about that. I'm used to the second ones. All right, so both motions have been approved. The next item is the city manager's report. Thank you very much, Director Asher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Claims and payroll, I will pass it on, um, to Councilmember Supple since Councilmember Garcia is not here.
I would be happy to approve claims and payroll, or a motion to approve claims and payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll has been approved. Thank you. And then the next item on our agenda is the open forum, and we have one person registered, Scott J. Dahlquist. If you could please come up to the microphone? Yes, please, thank you. And if you could state your name, um, and your address before you...
Scott.
Thank you.
Is this working?
Yes.
Scott Dahlquist, sixty-nine thirteen Eleventh Avenue South. Shall I begin?
Yes, absolutely.
I've been a Richfield resident since nineteen ninety-one. I also served as a Minneapolis police officer from nineteen eighty-eight until twenty fourteen. In December of nineteen eighty-eight, I was a newly hired Minneapolis police officer. One night, several other officers and I were sent to an address to check on a distraught person. We climbed an arrow stairs to an upper room, and upon entering, we found a man who jumped up from behind a couch, holding half a garden chair under his chin. He looked at us, he looked at us and said, "Go ahead and bleeping kill me, I don't care." A tense standoff ensued. If he didn't approach us, we weren't going to shoot him, and he was unwilling to charge us. After a few seconds, we retreated outside to come up with a plan. The senior officers present decided to approach him again and spray him with mace in the hope that we could control him without shooting him. We went back in and applied mace until he staggered and dropped the garden chair. We then promptly put him in handcuffs and had him transported to the hospital. A police officer must accept the reality that they may have to apply deadly force to prevent death or great bodily harm to themselves or another. And most, I believe, would hope that that situation would be that of a bad person clearly intent on harming others, and on an otherwise good person, so lost in their own mind that forcing a fatal encounter with an officer seems the only way out. Later in my career, the TASER came along. The device uses two probes attached to thin wires to deliver a disabling jolt of electricity to a subject, who can then be promptly handcuffed. If the probes make contact, the TASER works very well. If the subject is moving, the chance of a successful deployment decreases. To be a police officer is to place oneself in harm's way for the greater good. Sometimes to save a life, at other times to end one. Officers involved in the latter, if they are cleared of criminal wrongdoing, don't usually get medals or an award ceremony covered with a press conference. Perhaps as a society, this is how we come to terms with these unfortunate events. It would be a disservice to these officers, however, if they were made to feel ashamed for actions which the law allowed and the situation required. Towards the end of his second term, President Obama stated that police officers deserve to go home at the end of their shift. And I would add, they deserve a chance at a long and honorable career. I thank you. Do I need to sign in here?
Um, yes, please write your name and your address on the sheet. Thank you very much, Mr. Dahlquist. Is there anybody else here for the open forum? Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in the open forum? Seeing as we have nobody else here for the open forum, we will move to hats off for Hometown Hits, and I will pass it on to Councilmember Troutman.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, hometown, or hats off to Hometown Hits announcements are really brief. Just wanted to let folks know about a couple of events, uh, coming up, preparing for, for winter, uh, coming up on the seventeenth. And then, um, the following week, on the twenty-fourth, we have, um, outdoor survival skills. And so if you have grade schoolers like I do, they're reading the Hatchet Book, um, which is all about surviving in the wilderness, and we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna do the survival skills. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh, so for, for young and old, um, if you, if you want to know how to survive in the wild and in, in weather like this, it's a great opportunity. It's a, it's a great resource. And, uh, for, for those that are concerned, this is not to negate, our beautiful, other parks are wonderful. But we have, we have a gem in Wood Lake, and, uh, just encourage folks to, to get out there and use it, any kind of weather.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to do a shout-out to the Richfield Arts Commission. Um, they participated in the, um, Morris Nielsen's Community Trunk or Treat, and it was a great night. There are a lot, tons of kids just coming out, and they're all different community organizations and, um, different businesses that were there. And I thought that the Arts Commission represented the city well, and I just wanted to do a shout-out to them for all their work, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things, uh, actually, all of mine are, are school-related this week. Um, one, I mentioned before, the, the new after-school programs in our school district. Um, I've had the honor to go and volunteer a couple of times already at, um, the after-school program at Centennial. Uh, they are still looking for volunteers. Um, it's a great program. If you are available in the, the late afternoon for, um, either working directly with kids or even just helping with the, the snack or the, the dinner that they provide, um, they're still looking for, um, interested people to help out. Um, and, and then also want to give a, a big shout-out to all six of the candidates who ran for school board. Um, it takes a lot to run for office, and it was a very, very close race. Uh, I hope that the, um, certainly congratulations to, um, to Allegra and Crystal and Paula for, um, winning the election, um, pending, uh, final canvassing results. Um, but, uh, also just want to give, um, give some love to the other three and hope that they continue to do the good work they're doing in the community and that together we can keep, um, keep working together toward that. So that's what I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. And I have two items I just want to send well wishes to Councilmember Garcia, who was ill and was unable to make our council, um, meeting today. And I know her, so she will be watching this meeting, um, if not tonight, maybe tomorrow. So we hope that she, um, gets better and, um, that she's able to join us at, when she's able. And the last thing is, I just want to share, uh, a belated Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans in our community, um, in Minnesota. I was able to, um, participate in our STEM Schools Veteran Day Celebration, which is becoming one of my favorite, um, celebrations of the year that I look forward to, as well as one with the Richfield Rotary Club and multiple Rotary Clubs across the area. And then another one, um, with our former council member, Tom Fitz Henry, in the group that, um, does so much great work with our veterans, um, beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee and the folks who focus on our veterans memorial. Um, so Councilmember Supple was there last night. It was freezing cold, and there was a very, uh, pretty substantial group there, which was very impressive, um, outside in the cold and the dark to honor our veterans and read the names that were on the memorials. And just, um, asking community members for support. Um, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee, that is led by former council member Fitz Henry, um, will be doing, is already preparing and fundraising, um, for their next event. And we'll find, we'll get more information, and we'll be asking for community members to please, um, contribute and help make that, uh, memorial event, uh, a success. But thank you to all of the veterans in our country, um, who, who sacrificed their life and, um, their families and their futures, um, to fight for, for our nation, um, and, and other countries across the world. And that is it. Um, and with that, we, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.